To the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right.
We got it.
Got it, Tom.
Commissioner Zuber, would you call the role, please?
Sure. Commissioner Ataria?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster is absent. Commissioner O'Conne is absent. Commissioner Singh is absent. But we have Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
We have Commissioner Weber. And Commissioner Zuber, I am here. And, the last time I'm gonna say this, and Chairman Green.
I am here. All right. Okay, so we last met November fourteenth, and there are minutes that have been made up for that. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes from November fourteenth?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Weber, and support by Commissioner Zuber. Voice vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and tonight's agenda consists of three items, where we're discussing some zoning ordinances and the master plan. Any late additions from staff to the agenda?
At the end of the meeting, I would like to talk about 2023 schedule. I know we just approved that last month, but there's one meeting in particular that I want to discuss whether to hold that date or to pick an alternate date.
Okay, all right. Anything from the commission to add to the agenda? All right, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda with the addition?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion with addition by support, or a motion by Commissioner Weber, and support by Commissioner Zuber. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any communications to discuss that came across your computer?
Not for the same thing.
Mail, or anything like that? Okay, all right. We don't have any public hearings, we have old business. So let's get right into it. Let's talk about item number one, which is the zoning ordinance text amendment, dealing with solar energy in Canton. Patrick, could you give us some detail on that?
Sure, thank you. Last month's meeting, we discussed solar energy system standards that will be considered for the zoning ordinance, and a public hearing has been scheduled, which will take place at the January Planning Commission meeting. And, so even though the public hearing was scheduled, the Planning Commission had asked for some additional information about solar energy systems, just to get a little bit of background, some of the standards that are out there, and some of the best practices. So, we've included both in our email and in our packet, some links to documents for information about solar energy. We had sent the Planning and Zoning for Solar Energy Systems, a guide for local governments, and that's published by MSU Extension and U of M Graham Sustainability Institute, and we included a copy of that with the Planning Commission packet. There's also a webinar that we sent on the same, on the same document, but there was a panel of experts that had presented that webinar. Third, the State of Michigan website has, it has a website titled, "Am I zoning database?" And it includes databases of communities and what types of renewable energy standards they have, both for solar energy and for wind energy. And I did check it, and it looked pretty accurate for Canton, where we do have wind energy standards, but we don't have solar energy standards yet. And finally, the State of Michigan Department of Eagle has a publication titled, "Am I Healthy Climate Plan?", and it includes some priorities and goals that specify wind and solar energy across the state. The last item in our report is regarding some questions that the Planning Commission had last month about how HOAs regulate solar panels. Some of the older HOAs, ones that are fifteen, twenty years or older, typically don't address solar panels because they weren't really something to be addressed at the time they were created. So, many bylaws and conditions, covenants and restrictions are silent on them unless a homeowners association has subsequently added those standards. Some of the newer HOAs over the last ten, fifteen years, when they are approved, they do add items to their original bylaws that do regulate solar energy. In some cases, they just outright prohibit them, just as one blanket regulation for the development as a whole. Others prohibit them without a prior approval by the developer, the HOA board, or an architectural control committee of the HOA. Or some, that should be a three there, some allow them by right in their bylaws, but they include some zoning-like regulations in terms of areas, placements, and things like that. So, HOA standards, they are kind of all over the board. One thing I will say about some of the newer HOAs, where the developer proposes bylaws that outright prohibit solar energy, once those HOAs take effect where the actual property owners control the HOA board, in the future, those owners can amend their bylaws to allow for solar energy, and I suspect that some of them will, especially as more owners want to put solar energy, and they may trend towards having more zoning-like regulations than being outright prohibitive of them. So those are some things that we found as we were going through some of the recent HOA documents over the last few years. So...
If I could stop you real quickly, Patrick. I think that, right there, is a potential problem that is gonna have to really be looked at a lot by the lawyers and everybody else, because if there's anything like my subdivision, there wasn't any verbiage concerning those things. However, those who do, like you said, there's gonna be a conflict, and you're gonna have people that are swearing that their rights have been stripped away from them. I think there's gonna have to be some verbiage dealing with the rights of residents and residential owners, and what they can do, but obviously, within the scope of what the commission and trustees come up with in terms of rules regarding it, it's gonna be a mess in some instances, I foresee that. And I just wanted to put that out there, that it's not gonna be a simple cut-and-dried deal with that. But I definitely think that the homeowners associations should be in the loop with the township on the coordination, one way or the other. If, if the, if the bylaws of a particular neighborhood specify no, and they actually say, no solar equipment, I believe, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe that that's a legal restriction. It's nothing you can do about that, and the homeowners association has every right to enforce that. I don't know what you do about that, and I guess people would have to move. If they really want solar equipment, they'd just have to move into another neighborhood. But those who don't deal with it at all, it's left up to their homeowners association for appearances, and location, and things of that nature. And I think the township's help in the ordinance will be greatly appreciated by the homeowners association if there are specifics that are laid out as to where it can, you know, be on the property, as well as the heights and all that kind of stuff we kind of touched on last time. I just want to put that out there, that it's not gonna be an easy task to put all of that together.
Well, if I can ask a question, what, maybe this is not me, ignorance on my part, what would be the motivation for a developer to put in the original bylaws prohibiting solar equipment? Anything other than aesthetics?
Um, I can't really...
And even if it is aesthetics, what's the developer care? What's their, what are they afraid of, that they won't be able to sell the homes, or what?
That could be it. That could be a combination of that and the aesthetics, if it's one developer in a large development, and they build, say, a third of the homes, and they're trying to actively market the other two...
I think you need to be closer to your mic, too.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay. If they, let's say a developer builds a third of the homes, and then the developer is actively trying to market and build the other two-thirds of the homes, but if, on some of the first third, some of the solar panels are just covering a roof, and aesthetically, it doesn't look great, and the developer's first inclination might be, well, just prohibit all solar everywhere, I don't want to deal with regulations in terms of how many square feet, or placement only in certain areas, it's easier for them as they're developing the property, or developing the site, just to outright prohibit them, and not have to worry about whether it's going to be an aesthetic issue.
I'm thinking that with newer developments, in theory, anyway, you'll have not old fuddy duddies like us up here on the, on the...
Hey, speak for yourself.
You might be old, I'm not a fuddy duddy.
Well, you know what I mean. Buying, purchasing these homes that might be more energy-conscious, more sustainability-conscious, you know, environmentally-conscious, that might be more thinking about solar as an alternative to, and to have a developer prohibit that, I don't know, I can see both sides. I'm just thinking that if a developer's coming into the township, and, you know, they were having you review their initial documents and all this sort of thing, and their bylaws, they have to be looked at and such, you know, if that prohibition's in there, I'd, granted, we don't have the authority to say it, but I'd strongly encourage them to reconsider that.
Through the chair?
Well, we...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Well, my point, along with, it's a great point, because subdivisions that are yet to be, still have to go through that process, and the planning staff, and commission, and trustees have a chance to impact that. We rarely do, I mean, we rarely say anything about bylaws. But if that's in there to prohibiting it, maybe, maybe we should have a prohibition against prohibiting the equipment. You know what I'm saying? It's like, okay, so that's another thing that legal has to look at, as to what our role on establishing those legal documents are for the neighborhood.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I think I can help you with this. So, just keeping in mind that, right now, sustainability and the environment are at front of mind with most developers, and I know so because I deal with it every day. There is a move afoot, either through lame duck right now, or through future legislation, in no political lean at all, but there are moves afoot to be able to provide for solar access through state-based legislation, which would, of course, allow for solar to be an acceptable form of energy for all, meaning, a solar access statute would strictly prohibit an HOA from prohibiting the access to solar, which is, I mean, it's just like, I mean, if we were living in the eighteen hundreds, and we all ride horses, and someone says, hey, you have this fancy car now, we want to prohibit that, and well, guess what? At some point, we're gonna all, we'll be moving toward these things called automobiles, no matter whether you like it or not, right? So now, legislation's now gonna move itself, given the sustainability initiatives that are afoot, to be able to say, now, Michigan, along with other states, California, Colorado, you name it, that I'm familiar with now, that have solar access statutes that strictly prohibit the prohibition of solar access.
Okay, and to your point, do we want to go down that road? I guess that's the question. Because, also to your point, bringing that horse-car analogy, you know there was opposition back in the day?
Sure.
In terms of, well, why do we need these things, you know, we can't even put fuel in them, you know, where are we gonna get the fuel? All that kind of stuff. You're gonna have opposition to this, even in today's society. So, do we want to be that entity that says, I don't care what, you cannot prohibit it? Or do we want to have some sort of hands-off approach?
And I think that's a legal question, I'm not sure what our role is.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
I think at this point, isn't our job to just say, let's talk about creating this in our zoning ordinance, and set a public hearing for it?
And see what happens?
We actually have a public hearing.
Yeah, well, there's a motion in here to set a public hearing.
So, that's from last month.
Oh, that was just still in the...
That's in here for reference.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I think that, that the legal part is not something we need to deal with. And I understand if you're bringing it up just to say, hey, Patrick, just an FYI, it seems like this is something you're gonna, might have to deal with, but I don't think that's a part of our...
That's correct.
...job.
So, to your point, do you think we should proceed as if it's going to be allowed, so therefore, we need to come up with the rules, and let legal back it out?
Yes.
If it, if it needs to be backed out?
Yes, I think we need to set some rules.
I think that's a fair way to approach it, rather than, you know, wait for them to get on board with what you can and cannot do.
I don't think we were saying that. I just think you raised the point about, some HOAs are prohibiting this. I mean, just FYI, this is something we might have to deal with. To Commissioner Eggenberger's point, our job here is to establish the rules. If someone's gonna have them, okay, but this is the rules you gotta play by. Whether, whether the state ends up passing some enabling legislation that prohibits communities from prohibiting these, that's not for us to address right now. It's a nice-to-know thing.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess my point is, and I brought this up for the panel here, is that, okay, I'm all, personally, this is just a personal thing, I'm all for prohibiting the prohibition. Okay? That's me, all right? Somebody else might feel, well, you know what, each neighborhood should have their own right to do whatever they want to do, like, like states' rights type of thing. So, we can't do anything about the ones that, if there are any, that already have it in their bylaws. That's a legal document, it's filed with its county, and so on and so forth. But we can prohibit future bylaws from being produced and filed with the county that prohibit solar equipment. We can, we can, I'm sure we have the ability to do that before we approve the new developments.
But that's outside our scope, I think, is what we're seeing.
But if, okay, it's outside of our scope, however, we can write the guidelines for that to happen, and then legal has to take it from there.
Yeah, I mean, that's more of a legal question.
If you leave it alone, it could happen, and you just don't, you just don't know it happened. You know what I'm saying? Rather than, than the commission putting it out there and saying, okay, this is what we foresee is necessary in Canton, you know, as something that's necessary for new development, new neighborhood development.
Yeah, we can, we can ask our attorneys whether that's something that can be lawfully put into an ordinance and enforced, where we would be superseding an HOA's bylaws based on a design or something like that?
And I wouldn't put it as superseding. I wouldn't, would I, the way I, we're getting off our, out of our path here, but the way I would put it is, existing ones are left alone, they're grandfathered in. Any new developments coming along, then have that...
Right.
...warranted. And then, existing HOAs have the ability to, once the developer's out of the picture, they can amend their bylaws the way they see fit. Just, again, that's for legal to determine. We have, we set up the ground rules here for people who want to install, and that's, and that's our, that's our daily work right now, so...
Because, for one thing, I would think a developer would want to know the rules upfront, because somebody may or may not want to buy into a neighborhood based upon what they have heard, because most people don't read their bylaws, but it's word of mouth, they have heard about a restriction that affects them. Oh, we, I don't move there, you, I know you're, you're gonna want to put in solar equipment, they don't, they don't allow it in that neighborhood, or stuff, stuff like that. So I'm thinking that putting it ahead of new development, and putting it out there, is a good thing.
Yeah, and I think we can, we can help on a couple different ends. First is that, if there is, if there's a zoning ordinance amendment that includes solar energy regulations, for the first time ever, Canton will have solar energy regulations on the books, where if there's a new development that comes in, and their bylaws show the prohibition, we can show the developer, not just say, we disagree with your prohibition, but we can show the standards and say, look, it's not something that is out of control, it is regulated in our ordinance, they're reasonable regulations, they're based on some best practices that are published, and they're not really anything to be feared. And maybe the developer looks at it and says, okay, well, maybe the roof-mounted, yes, the ground-mounted, you know, I don't know, because some HOAs prohibit detached structures, and sheds, and fences, things like that. But I think having regulations on the books takes away a little bit of the fear from a developer. Also, when there is an existing HOA, say there was one built five years ago, and they have an outright prohibition in their bylaws, the HOA may feel the same way as the developer does, is they may be struggling as an HOA board, thinking, well, I know so-and-so wants panels, but do we have the HOA board look at each and every application, or does the HOA try to adopt standards in its bylaws? And, a lot of them may not be equipped to write those standards in the bylaws, because they don't know exactly what it is they're regulating. But we can help those HOAs by saying, well, our ordinance has standards, and if you like them, you can just default to our ordinance, or copy and paste it and put it in your own bylaws. So I think having some public education, getting the word out there that we have them, can help a lot of our HOAs.
Just as an aside, it's incredibly difficult for an HOA to change their bylaws, but...
Yeah, it's really, really difficult.
Oh my god, it's almost impossible. I've tried.
Just getting enough people to vote.
Yeah, they put such a high percentage in the, in the bylaws, but anyway.
Okay, so Chairman Green, what's our next step here?
Okay, so I guess...
The public hearing has been set, so what do we need to do here?
That's my question to Patrick. Okay, so how far do we go with the information that we have to starting the ball rolling? Because this seems like something that's very open-ended, in terms of where you could go with, with the information. I mean, most of the information I read in here was basically about farms, you know, energy farms, which I don't think we're gonna, we probably will not have a lot or any of. I think we're gonna be dealing mainly with individual homes wanting to get involved in solar collection. So, how do we start this ball rolling?
Isn't there already in here some zoning text? And is that what the public hearing's gonna be about?
Yeah, there's a draft ordinance.
Okay, so...
So that's what the public hearing will be about?
So do we adopt that, and then...
Well, I think we have to have the public hearing, and then we'll vote on it. So I, it feels like at this point, we're just going to, if we have any more questions about the draft document, otherwise, we can just move on, and on, in January, hear what the public has to say about it.
I agree.
Go ahead.
I agree. I think this, tonight was, was more about information to us than we asked for last month, because we couldn't, we knew we couldn't have the public hearing tonight, so...
Right.
Okay. I feel comfortable with that, because it's like, I mean, you could spend an eternity just going through detail. I think you need to have a starting point, and I guess that's as good as any, is to having it out there, having people look at it, having a lot of different minds look at it, and come to a public hearing, and voice their concerns. And I won't be here to...
Well, I think it's, it certainly, I don't think we're trying to reinvent the wheel. I think that a lot of this text has already been created, and it's a great model, and I think it's a, it's a good one...
That's a good point, that's a good point.
...to use.
So...
Does, does Michigan Township Association give any guidance on this stuff?
On the, on the...
Michigan Municipal League?
The, you mean the best practices, or the legal aspect of... They might. I know that back when solar was becoming more prevalent in the early two thousands, there were a lot of publications from the state associations, including Michigan Association of Planning, and a lot of the regulations were all over the board, because solar was much more expensive, much less efficient, and there's been updates in technology that have, that have made improvements on both ends. They may have something, it may be a little bit older, but we can search those. The reason we have the document that we put in, in the packet is, this is, it's advertised by the State of Michigan, it's kind of accepted as the gold standard, and, which reminds me, I would, I would hope that if there's ever anything that the state does in terms of preemptions of local government regulation, and they're looking at state standards, I would, I would think that one of the first places they would look would be this publication in terms of, what are some best practices, and what can we implement in state law that's, you know, fairly straightforward and widely accepted.
Because I, you know, I foresee, depending on naturally what's going on in Washington, and who's in charge, I foresee a big acceleration in the want, not necessarily the need, but the want of this in individual homes, okay? I see, I see them wanting to do this, based upon, well, the neighbors are doing it, and then Washington's gonna get on board and say, oh, we'll help you out with that, we're gonna, we have a financial aid package for that, da-da-da-da-da. Okay, so with that in mind, we need to be, you know, ready, and I guess, to Commissioner Eggenberger's point, we need to have a starting point, and those, that verbiage is as good as any to get going with it. I'm sure we're gonna have changes necessitated along the way by, by actual practices, but we've gotta have, have something to start with. So, do I hear a motion to do that? Is that what we need to do?
Patrick, just had one question. Are we aware of any HOA that's actually prohibiting solar panels? Has it come to your attention, because we're discussing about it?
Yeah, there are some. We've looked through some bylaws of some recently approved ones within the last, say, five years, and looking, looked at a sampling, and there are quite a few recently where they put an outright prohibition into their bylaws. Some, some will prohibit them, but allow the developer or the HOA board to, to allow for them. And that, that one is probably the best of both worlds for the developer, so that the developer has control as long as he or she controls the development, and then, once it goes to the HOA board, then it's more of a hands-off approach, and then from there, they can deal with them on a case-by-case basis. But there are some that outright prohibit solar.
Okay. Because here's, here's another thing that we don't want to have, okay? You don't want to have a situation where individual residents say, to hell with you, homeowners association, I have a right to do this, there it is under the law, under Canton's law and everything, I don't even need to get your approval on this. We need to keep the homeowners association involved in every step of the way. And, you know, if they, if they only get involved as to positioning on the property and relationship to the house, or things of that nature, so be it. But they need to be involved, because we're, every step we take, we seem to be weakening the authority and strength of the homeowners association, which I think is very dangerous to Canton.
Yeah, it would be another legal question of whether HOA approval would be required before the township issues a permit, or if the township can only issue a permit based on what's in our ordinance, and ultimately, the owner has to meet both regulations. They have to meet both their bylaws and township ordinances.
The township has been getting away, and I'll say this publicly, they've been getting away from the necessity to have the homeowners association involved in homeowners approvals in the permitting process. And I think that's very bad, I really do. I think that one of the reasons that Canton has been as attractive as it is, is because the homeowners associations were, at one time, very, very strong, and the township promoted that. Township wanted each of these neighborhoods to have strong associations, because self-governance was better in the eyes of many back, back in the day. Now, we get situations of renegade, you know, bylaw, you know, thrown out, and so on and so forth, and people just doing whatever the heck they want, and there's nothing you can do about it. If, if the township says, eh, we're okay, whether we issued a permit, and they, you know, if you want to take them to court, whatever, you can do that.
Are you talking about, like, additions?
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about just, just things like garbage placement, and garbage bins, and now, you know, if we have solar equipment, that's gonna be a thing. There's, there's a lot of things that homeowners association should be involved in, and they're becoming less and less involved with residences. We're gonna have that same issue, and we're gonna get into the next topic here when we talk about fences. It's the same thing, it's gonna be a very, very strong pull away from any authority. And I think the township needs to keep authorities that are looking out for the best interest of the neighborhoods and Canton, involved in that process. But I just...
I think, though, in general, people resent other people telling them what they can and can't do with their property.
Right, yeah. And that's what associations do, and that's what the township does sometimes.
Yeah, with their reason.
Well, that...
So, but that's, we can, we can have friendly disagreement about that.
Okay, all right.
So, I need, I'm a little confused. Do we have a public hearing set for January, or do you need a motion?
There was a motion made at the November fourteenth meeting, so that, that public hearing has been set, and we just have to publish it for the next available Planning Commission date. So, there's no motion required for this item on the agenda.
Okay, so we're, we're good, so we're good with this item?
And so, will you be publishing that, that verbiage with that to people out there online, or, I mean, what, how will they know what they're talking about?
We'll have a notice published in the newspaper that there's an ordinance proposed, a public hearing for an ordinance that addresses solar energy, and that the ordinance is available at the township. And even because it's been in the last couple packets, anyone who wants to find it, it's on our last couple of meeting packets.
And it'd be... Can it be out there online as well?
It would be on the township website.
It would be on the website? Okay, in terms of the verbiage?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, all right. So you don't need anything from us to go forward with that?
No, I don't think so. Just if there's any questions along the way, but we'll ask our legal counsel on these ones.
Oh, there's going to be questions. Be prepared. There will be.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Thank you. Okay, so onward.
Second item on the agenda is zoning ordinance text amendment for fences and walls. Could you tell us more about that, Patrick?
Sure. So this is another one that's a continuation of our prior two meetings to discuss fences. And this one won't be an action item either. We don't need any kind of motion. We're not at the point of scheduling a public hearing. We're just going through some parts of the fence ordinance to address in terms of major items and how to write up the draft text based on, in this case, would just be visual preference. And this memo of December 5 focuses on those corner lots that have one side along a major road that where it's not accessed and then the other side is an internal subdivision street where the road is accessing the lot itself. So what we're looking at in this memo is just corner lots along major thoroughfares, not those internal subdivision lots of which we have several hundred in the township, I would think. We're looking at mostly the entrance to subdivisions in those corner lots there. And on the memo that we sent out, there's a few different types of fences that are out there, different types of options. First of all, the zoning ordinance does not allow the fences to be located in front yard setbacks. And because the major thoroughfare is technically a front yard, a fence is not allowed within the setback area along the major thoroughfare, although many of the lots that abut major thoroughfares have fences along those sides. So one of the things that we want to look at is to allow the fence to be along the front lot line abutting the major thoroughfare for that, I'll call it the rear of the house, the rear yard portion. Some of the questions would be how far forward can that fence go? And some of the options here range from anywhere from the fence terminating at the rear of the house all the way to a fence going to the very front of the house. And a lot of it is just based on what kind of developed character we want to see over the next several years because we do get a lot of variance requests from owners that live on corner lots in subdivisions along major roads. And over time, whatever regulations that we have is going to define the character of those corners, those entries to the subdivisions. And ways to define those entrances, oftentimes it's the architecture, it's a street sign, but it's also the fences that we allow the owners there to construct. So we want to be thorough in terms of what kind of fences, if any, we would allow in the front yards there and how to regulate those. And then, once we look at the major roads, we get some consensus on some of these corner lot items. Then we can work to side yards between two lots and internal corner streets. But the ones starting with the major roads where they intersect the subdivision street, that's probably enough place to start in terms of corner lot fence regulations. So I'll stop there and take any kind of, any questions that you have. And then, if you want, we can start going through each of the options. We can put some of the types of fences on the screen and talk about them in more detail.
All right, that sounds fair enough. I'm going to just open the floor on this and just see, does anybody have anything they want?
I think getting into the examples will probably generate, would probably generate questions, so...
Okay, do you want to start with the first one?
Well, I already know I like option D. I was looking at it this afternoon and I really like option D.
Where do we want to start?
I do.
Okay, so...
It is very helpful. I know some of these houses so well.
Okay, as a starting point, allow the fence to be located between the rear lot line and somewhere in the front half of the house, but a certain distance behind the front of the house.
The, yeah, we'll go with number four. So option D, it's... Yeah, where it goes a little bit farther forward than the middle of the house, although this one is kind of exaggerated because of the front of the garage. Let me see if we can find. Yeah, this example six would be a good one where the fence is along the major thoroughfare. It encloses the rear yard and then it goes forward, not quite to the front of the house, but farther forward than the front half. So here you can see where, you can still see part of the front of the house, the fences. I wonder if I can get a...
I feel like it doesn't block off the front, but it gives the people that live there a chance to have some real privacy.
Yeah, see, and that's my point. Maybe I'm more radical than most. Because this right here on our right is the major thoroughfare, right? If they, to me, if they wanted to extend the fence going along the sidewalk more towards the other sidewalk...
More towards the front?
Towards us, towards us, as we're looking at it, not coming down where the cursor is. If they just wanted, not the part that goes up to the house, just the other part. Because basically what you're doing is you're shielding from the major thoroughfare, right? The yard is already, has already been protected. But I'm thinking, okay, let's allow them, if they want to, extend that one piece of fence towards the next sidewalk. You see what I'm saying?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Just that part.
In that case, just pointing out, though, and Patrick will probably agree with me, I don't think they would be able to enclose the utility pole because if they brought it out any farther than that, it would enclose the utility pole right there.
Well, that particular spot might be difficult because of the position of that pole, but you get my point. My point is that, you know, these are the, we're dealing right now with houses that are bordering the major thoroughfares and people requesting, now, are we going to allow them to enclose the entire front yard? I suggest not. But I do see the compromise being, well, let's extend, let them extend that one fence along the major thoroughfare up to, close to the next sidewalk.
Well, I think one of the problems with that, though, is that you're really blocking off kind of the whole visibility into the subdivision. So that's not what I'm seeing on these examples. I'm seeing it just goes either to the middle of the garage or towards the front of the garage. But I think if it went all the way to the sidewalk, you're really blocking off the entire subdivision.
And you're blocking off visibility from somebody who's coming out of the subdivision.
Well, there's, you'd have to taper down. You've seen them where they taper down when they get close to the sidewalk. They taper it down.
There are some where it's, and there's some pictures of that where they have something in the front and it's just like a, this one, you can see it's like a half wall.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's...
The HOA, though, I think.
And then they can see through. But I don't think you want a six-foot one that's going all the way out there. I think that would be dangerous.
If we're talking about things like with aesthetic issues like we were with solar panels, I wouldn't want a fence coming all the way out to the front, to that front sidewalk. My feeling is come out partway down to the side of the house, much like this one is. And I can see it fences in a side door over there. That's what I think of it as necessary for a privacy fence. Otherwise, to me, there's no reason for it to come beyond the back edge of the house.
And isn't this option D kind of the most forgiving of the options?
That, the one that was the most forgiving was option E and that was number two. And I'll pull that one up here. Now, that's one where they have the fence and it goes to the very front of the house. So you've got a six-foot fence and it's even with the front. I know they have a little bit of wall right here, but if we ignore the wall for a moment, as you go in, you still see the front of the house, but with that fence being even with the house, the fence does, it is kind of a major feature. I wouldn't recommend allowing this fence to go any farther forward from the house just because as someone's, you know, keeping the corner clear, if someone goes into the sub, you want them to see the homes. You don't want a big fortress meeting them as they come in.
I'm not sure I even like it to the end of the garage. I like it. That's why I liked option D. Where you still were able, like you said...
Right to the front.
Doug, where it covers a door into the garage, it gives them that option, but it doesn't go all the way to the front of the garage.
So do we delineate how far back it has to be from the front of the house? Or do we just say it has to be somewhere between?
I think option D gave some details on that.
Somewhere in the front half of the house, but a certain distance behind the front of the house.
Yeah.
That's not particularly clear, is it?
No, it's not very...
You can have language in there. If it was, if it encloses a side door, I mean, something of that nature.
No, I think you just...
It can't go past an entryway that's on the side of the house.
No, I think it could just say it has to be between, it can be, it must be somewhere, it must be two feet back from the front of the house or five feet back from the front of the house.
I think that's safe because chances are if there's a door there, it's going to be more than two feet from the front of the house.
Well, if there's a door, they can get a variance.
And then, yeah, then there's always that, a variance. Because it's...
Here, it's hard to tell. This might be maybe...
I don't know what that is vertically there, but that's...
That's the post for the fence. I think the gate's open.
Oh, I said it's a gate? Okay, gotcha.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So that's about two feet, it looks like.
That's about two feet, yeah.
That's it right there.
Yeah, so it's, you see the corner, you see a couple feet of the corner. It's just a matter of how far back.
What's the depth of a typical garage? Eight feet?
Depth of a garage? It's like 20 feet for the whole garage? 22 feet?
So, well, that was way off. So if you went...
Yes, you were. Your car would be very, very smashed, yeah.
So if we're looking at two feet, because that looks like it's about halfway in.
No, that's the fence post there.
Yeah, that post is...
And it's the gate's open and you see the hinges.
Pass the dogs.
We were saying the same thing.
So that's where it's just about two feet in, okay.
It's only about two feet from the edge of the brick.
I say go with something like that and let, like you said, if there's a variance needed, then so be it. Then go through that process.
But if their door is that close to the front of their garage, why happen?
They're going to want to be able to cover it.
Because the overhead door is right there, so it'd be silly.
Yeah, I want to go back to, yes, this is definitely helpful. I do want to go back to option number two. I think this gives a good, or this is the most, I guess, forgiving one. And so it would be a question of, you know, if we're looking at it from a 90-degree perpendicular angle, how far back from this corner by looking at this, you know, how far it looks pretty good, you know? A certain number of feet. And we can, now that we've got some info, we can look for more examples and come to a future meeting with saying, okay, well, now that we're in the front half, here are some examples of how many feet and really kind of narrow that down.
It'd be helpful because this is giving us a starting point.
This looks like the wood fence actually goes beyond a chain link fence that's perpendicular that we can barely see.
You have great eyesight there, Dawn. I think you're right.
Well, I'm an architect. I don't know if I mentioned that.
Yes, that's coming in handy.
That fence looks photoshopped, but it's...
Okay, so, yeah, if you could come to, I don't know, whatever, next meeting.
I am not capable of photoshopping that well.
With some more pictures to give us some idea about what's two feet look like, what's other foot. I think that would help us come up with our next game plan on it, which hopefully would be helpful.
So now you've got to go measure fences at people's houses?
We can do a lot from street view.
Well, let me give you a clue. A normal brick is eight inches, so three bricks wide would be 24. That's how I'm counting on that other one.
Well, to your point, to your point, Ms. Architect, the chances of somebody having a door, a pedestrian door that close to the overhead door is very rare, right? So giving them two feet, I think, pretty much clears, pretty much all necessity if they want to do it that way.
Yeah, and it gets it behind the downspout. Like, you know, that downspout would be within the first two feet, too. So, because if there's a downspout there, it's going to be right there at the corner.
If there's exceptions to be made, then they need to go get a variance.
I mean, if they can't put it two feet, they can put it three feet or four feet.
Exactly. I mean, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't have to be two feet. Two feet's the closest.
Yeah, I think that, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm excited about more pictures.
Oh, yeah, well, more now that we've got it kind of narrowed down of what, it sounds like we have consensus on, unless there's anything else that we should be getting pictures on or...
Like I said, I, you know, if you guys decided that you wanted to have, you know, like their little, their little half knee-high fence there, if you want to have something tapered down, it would need to taper down to something like that. I could do that on the busy side. No? You don't like that?
No.
Sorry, no consensus there.
Well, okay, because here's what, no, wait a minute. Okay, so to be consistent, we have a lot of neighborhoods in Canton that where the backyard backs up to the major thoroughfare and you have fence all the way to the corner there because that's where their backyard is.
Backyard. We're talking about the front.
Well, I know, but we're talking privacy one way or the other. We're talking about a...
Front yards are different than backyard.
Yeah, front yards are different.
Nope.
All right, shoot my argument down, why don't you?
We did.
Okay.
We did a great job.
All right, so do we need anything else on that issue?
No, we'll come next month with some more examples from the major corners. I'm not sure if we'll start to look at the internal corners or sides. We'll see how far along we get with the examples, but this is helpful.
All right, all right, then let's move on. We'll go on to discussion of the master plan. Erin, you ready to do that?
Of course. Good evening, everyone. So included in your packet is another update on the master plan. So just kind of highlighting some of the upcoming public engagement events that we've had. All of these things, as we've previously done, will be noted in the focus newsletter, which goes out to every homeowner. The social pinpoint page was launched on November 29. Now, this is an online platform as a way to highlight and promote all of the community engagement activities and events throughout the entire project. The site is linked from the township website, so nobody from the public has to go anywhere different. It's just all linked right there from the master plan page. But it's got a lot of useful, helpful information about the project, why we're doing this. And it's just a fun platform to use to highlight what we're doing. So that will be in effect throughout the length of the project. As I said, it was launched on November 29. Also launched on November 29 is the community survey. We've been working on it for several months and with our planning consultants, McKenna, the master plan advisory board looked at it at their first meeting on November 10 and gave us a lot of really helpful feedback and great recommendations. So planning staff and consultants had some lengthy conversations about that and incorporated a lot of the recommendations and thoughts that they had. So this survey will include a lot of topics such as housing, transportation, sustainability and a lot more. It is designed to be a 30, to give us a 30,000-foot view of Canton Township and what Canton Township residents, business owners, properties value and prioritize in the community. It is not intended to get into specific details about specific geographic locations or specific topics. It's meant to give us a very broad, general overview. And then it provides the foundation for us to then focus and tailor-make some very specific engagement opportunities. If we find that there's a lot of people that have interest in sustainability and environmental preservation, then we can do more, more specific engagement events and activities that will give us more information about that particular topic. Does that make sense? So I just want to make that clear to, not only to the public and anyone who's watching, is that there's going to be more events and activities. This is not just a one-stop community survey where we get this broad overview and that's it. This gives us the foundation on how we move forward throughout the rest of the process. So the survey is available online. As I said, it was launched on the 29th of November and it will be available until January 8. We have put out notices in a number of different ways. There was a press release that went out. It went out in the focus. Social media posts were done. We have posted notices and boards. You'll see one when you walked into the admin building this evening. There's a big board with QR codes and with website address to promote this throughout all of the township facilities. There's flyers that have been posted at the library. We have sent them also to the email base, to homeowners associations, community organizations, religious institutions, the mobile home park communities that are in the township. So we have done a lot of additional engagement to get this, to get the survey word out to the public. And at this moment, we currently have, wait for it, wait for it, 431... for it, wait for it, 431 survey responses. So, I'm sorry, 436. So, see, we've gotten five in the last 45 minutes. So, we have an internal pool as to how many, or guesses as to how many survey results we're going to get. So we really hope that you will not only take this survey yourself, but promote it to your friends, your family, your neighbors, people you work with, anybody who has a vested interest in Canton, try to get them to take the survey. So that way, we can get as much information as we can, and that way, we can really focus on the future community engagement events, as I mentioned before.
I've taken the survey, and it's very easy to do, and I think we all need to encourage people to, you know, get on board with that and put their information. But I do have to ask, so when the surveys are done, who's compiling the information, and how is that going to be disseminated in terms of usable stuff?
So the social pinpoint page that I mentioned, they have, they collect and can synthesize all that data, so we can look at it a little bit more comprehensively. And then we will look at it, not only McKenna consultants will look at it, but planning staff will look at it, and see what are the top priorities that people are interested in, what are the things that people care about? What do they like about the community, and what do they feel needs to be improved? And then we'll take that and compile that with everything that we received, not only from the community events that we did over the summer, Liberty Fest, Rally on Ridge, and Pride Outside. And then we'll be able to take all that and synthesize it together, and then focus some more community engagements, whether it's more strategies, I'm sorry, more surveys, or stakeholder discussions. We've talked about that before. So those are things that we're still working on in the future.
Is there a definite target date or period that we're looking at in terms of where we go forward with a new master plan? Or is it still, we're kind of going to wing it as we go, see what comes out of it, or...
Well, the public engagement strategy was going to continue on for several months. We're still working on, we're working on some of the texts and things like that with the advisory board, as, so we're going to start discussing vision, mission, value statements at the next meeting, this Thursday, actually. And those will provide the foundation for the goals and objectives that we set, that the master plan sets later on in the discussion. So those types of things can be done. We will look at existing conditions, the demographics, the history. Some of those things can be done while the public engagement component is being, is being taken care of. And then, once we receive all of that, then we can formulate a lot more of the text. We do have, it's slated for the community, or the public engagement to continue through the, out the end of the year and into early next year. Our start date was pushed back a little bit, just the way things worked out. So I think we're slated to be done with all of the engagement around April or May. And so then, then we'll be really focusing and pushing out a lot of text to the advisory board, and also to the planning commission to look at.
Very good, very good. Anybody have any other questions or concerns about the process they're going through? It sounds like it's going underway really well, you know, so I enjoyed that. Well, thank you very much for that. Patrick, you have a particular date on 2023 that's going to affect the planning commission?
It may. So when we approve the planning commission schedule for 2023, we did this at the November meeting, and the first Monday of January is the second, which is an observed holiday. So we moved the meeting to the following Monday, which is the ninth. So we typically do that every year with the first Monday of the month, because more often than not, it's either up against a holiday, or it may be a working day, but it's come off a holiday, and we like to get it the week after. Although, unlike in years past, January 9th, when we have a planning commission meeting scheduled, is also the college football championship game. And I know this staff person may have a conflict that evening. And...
I hear you.
You know, we don't have to, not necessarily move the meeting to a different date or time, but something to...
You're assuming a lot's going to happen on the 31st.
A lot is going to happen. I am confident.
I hope you're right, Patrick.
I've been unconfident, and now I'm just...
Seven and a half point favorites, not, you know, not taking that to the bank, but...
It was nine when it started.
I think this is good thinking, unless we have a big screen TV in here. Otherwise, I think you're right.
I don't know what you guys are talking about. No idea. The sports...
So what are you proposing? Move it a week?
Do the 16th?
Well, the 16th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and we want to...
Just don't have one in January?
Well, we have to have one. There's some applications that will have to be reviewed.
They have two public hearings scheduled.
Yeah, we may look for a weekday. We can email out the planning commission some alternative dates and times, if you'd like.
Patrick, I appreciate you thinking this through.
Oh, I should have thought about it a month ago, but since November 14th, you know, beat Ohio State, win the Big Ten, it's all happening very fast, so...
I liked your color combo today.
That was intentional, so I remember.
Patrick, I gotta say, I mean, in all seriousness, I appreciate you thinking about that, because...
Yeah, I'm serious, too.
I would struggle coming to this meeting and not watching the game. I'm just being honest.
I would be here. I would just be here. I mean...
But we might have it on our phone.
You might have it, you might be here by yourself.
I would be here by myself, but...
If I'm sitting here with an earbud in and...
Every once in a while, you cheer.
Wow.
I think some other day during the week, throw out some options and...
Okay, we'll send an email out to the group and see what...
Just not January 3rd. That's my birthday.
Ooh, we'd bring a cake.
Definitely not the 3rd, then.
Okay. This is one time I can say, I don't have to worry about that.
You don't.
Unless you were planning to attend the public hearing and, you know...
I will be, I will be...
Yes, I will. I'll follow, we'll follow up with more.
All right, very, very good. Well, that's the end of tonight's agenda, and I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Nancy Eggenberger on making the Hall of Fame, the Canton Hall of Fame.
I think that means, Greg, that I need to also congratulate you for making the Canton Hall of Fame. Congratulations. But we also need to say goodbye, a very sad goodbye, to two of our commissioners. We will miss you both.
We'll miss you, too.
Well, you can come anytime you want.
Yes, exactly, always welcome. We appreciate the time you've put in. It's been a pleasure.
I've been in the commission just for about four years, and the experience was fantastic. I think fellow commissioners made the job easy to understand the process, and it was fun all the way. And thanks to the planning staff, I got to learn quite a bit, and I'm more educated than I was four years back, so thank you for it.
And I, too, I want to commend you guys, the planning staff. You know, there hasn't been a month go by that I've been involved with the planning commission, that we've been left without proper information. Going back with Jeff Goulet days, and you picking right up after him, the staff has been wonderful. You've made us look great up here. We were having a discussion before the meeting began about just running the meeting, and I told Nancy and that when you have basically a script before you, you know, you could be as nervous as you want, and I'm very nervous when I start the meetings. That guide gets you going. It's like, okay, I need to talk about this. And then, if you miss something, you have a whole lot of helpful people on either side of you that, oh, you forgot to do this, you forgot to do that. And I want to thank all of you for putting up with me. You know, sometimes I come up with some wild ideas like tonight, and you, you know, put it out there. But that's what this commission is about. It's about sharing those ideas and putting them out there, and don't be afraid to do that, because it is the best for Canton that we're all concerned with, and we want to do good for Canton. So I commend you all for everything that you do. And with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Are adjourned.
Awesome. Wow, we're gonna miss you, Michael.